Tomorrow, voters across this province will be choosing mayors, councils, and school board trustees. School board elections used to be considered a little bit sleepy. Important work, but there often wasn't a lot of drama unless the school was at risk of closing. But this year, some of these elections have become politically charged. Outside groups have been endorsing candidates based on so-called parental rights and sexual identity. Here is the current president of the Saskatchewan School Boards Association, Jamie Smith-Windsor.
There is this trend toward the increasing politicization and polarization of education, politics, of those kinds of things. We do see that. It falls to our collective understanding about what school board governance is to really have a conversation about that. It's really important that our school boards remain independent and keep their focus very laser-focused on what's best for kids.
So what happens when people have fundamentally different views on what's best for kids? And what does this polarization mean for candidates on the ground and for school board elections as a whole? Today, we're dropping into one public school board race in Regina. We've invited all four candidates to be part of our program today. We'll have some of them here on the show to talk about their experience running and the issue that drove them to run for school board in the first place. We'll have questions from students, and as always, we want to hear from you. Do you have questions for our school board candidates? Call 1-800-716-2221 or email bluesky@cbc.ca. Well, there are hundreds of people across this province who are currently running for school boards. There is no way we could talk to all of those candidates, so we decided what seems the most fair is to pick one subdivision and invite all the candidates. We invited all four candidates in Regina Public Schools subdivision two. We expected to have three of those candidates. We do. We have-- perfect. We have three of those four candidates on the show today. So joining us in our Regina studio is Tracy McMurci. She is an incumbent for subdivision two and has been serving on the school board for the last two years. Tracy, hello and welcome to Blue Sky.
Thank you for having me.
Jason Agar has been teaching in Regina Catholic schools for the last 11 years. So if you're like me and curious about what drives a Catholic school teacher to run for public school board, we'll soon find out. Jason, welcome to Blue Sky.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be on here. Thanks for having me.
And a little bit later in the show, we'll hear from Cale McClellan. She's-- her Facebook page says she's running to be the first Indigenous school board trustee in Regina. She's out of town today, and she'll be joining us a little bit later on the show. So we'll look forward to that. And the candidate who has declined her invitation is Carla Taylor-Brown. She's the ARCAN endorsed candidate for the subdivision. Her bio says she is a mom, a school community volunteer, and former educational assistant. She says she'll work collaboratively to address classroom complexity, improve student achievement, and respect parental rights and focus on education, not activism. So in preparation for the show today, we worked with some Grade 11 students at Peacock, Collegiate, and Muscha. They submitted some questions, and what I'd like to do right now is just start with one of their questions.
Hi, my name is Nora Reynolds. I'm a Grade 11 student at Peacock Collegiate in Muscha. What led you to run for school board and what are your priorities?
Okay, Jason, you got that? What led you to run for school board and what are your priorities?
Well, that's a great question. So I'm a teacher of 11 years, and I love teaching. I have a passion for education, and I plan to teach for the next 20 years. And I kind of thought with what was going on with teacher negotiations over the last year and how we look at funding and education, I was looking at how can I do more while still being a teacher? And running for a kind of public school board allows me to have more impact on education while still being able to maintain my duties as a teacher with Regina Catholic schools. So it's about making an impact and trying to improve education for students, the community, and teachers.
Have you had a lot of people being like, "What the heck?"
Yeah, because it's not very common. When you look at school boards, rarely do you see a teacher on a school board. Because if I was to run for my own school board, it'd be a conflict of interest. If I was elected, I'd have to forfeit my teaching position. So lucky in Regina, we have two different school divisions, so it allows me to run in a different school division. So I'm actually really hoping that with this election, down the road, we see more teachers running. I think it'd be wonderful if we had one teacher on every school board to provide that classroom perspective.
So you would foresee someone from the public school system running for Catholic school board?
Yeah, as long as they're Catholic, they can run for the Catholic school board in Regina. So yeah, I think it'd be great. Even talking with other teachers at some of our teacher conferences, they're like, "Yeah, that's a great idea. Let's get more educators involved with the trustee position."
Okay, great. And Tracy, what about you?
Yeah, really, first of all, I'm a mom, and I have two kids in the Regina Public School system. And really, what led me to want to be trustee? I am the current trustee on the Regina Public School Board. And I came to Regina as a refugee from Vietnam, and I spoke no English. I faced the challenges you'd imagine as a newcomer. And I felt taken care of by my schools. I had teachers who cared about me. I felt safe and like I knew I belonged. Teachers and friends that I made would take care of me. And I think that helped me build resilience. And as a person, growing up, I went to seven different elementary schools. So really, that taught me accepting and--
That's a lot.
Yeah. And it made me feel like I was taken care of by the school system. And that's what I want for all of our kids.
So you've been serving for the last two years already, right?
Yes.
And was there a specific moment two years ago that made you decide this is the time that you wanted to get into the realm of school board politics?
Yeah, you know, my whole life, I've always wanted to make a difference and impact and make positive impact in the community. I've always looked to helping, volunteering in the community. And so I thought this was a perfect chance to kind of jump in and really try to work with the community to improve and make sure that we have high-quality education.
So before we go too far, there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding with the greater public about even what school boards do. I think that's something that we see all across the board with people running for mayor who think that they can do something that's more in the federal realm, maybe provincial politics, mixing that. And especially right now, you've also been in the midst of a provincial election. So there's a lot of messaging coming to people, and not everybody is particularly tuned in. So we wanted to get a little bit of a base understanding about just what school boards do. CBC reporter Shloke Talati spoke with the current president of the Saskatchewan School Board. Here is Jamie Smith-Windsor describing the role of school board as she sees it.
School boards exist in the context of the Education Act. So the Education Act sets out the roles and responsibilities of school boards. So in the context of the Education Act, the province is the funder, and school boards have local decision-making responsibilities. And those are outlined in our Education Act, in our laws. And school boards do that by setting strategic direction, by consulting with their communities, and setting local priorities and local policies, and developing local programs that are unique to their students and their communities. School boards also are responsible for the fiscal oversight of the dollars that are given to them through the education budget that they receive each spring. And so there's a significant amount of fiscal oversight that falls to school boards. So if you're a ratepayer, if you're a taxpayer, you want to be assured that there is strong fiscal oversight of those tax dollars in our publicly funded system. So the education budget is $3.3 billion in the province. The 27 democratically-elected school boards, so public, Catholic, and Francophone, provide a lot of oversight for most of those dollars. And that's a really significant role. At the end of the day, the biggest thing that school boards do and school trustees do is they provide nonpartisan decision-making in the best interests of kids. And so when decision-making comes to the table, they're centering every decision on what is in the best interests of their students.
Now, that was Jamie Smith-Windsor. She's the current president of the Saskatchewan School Board Association. And I want to talk to you about this. She talked about the importance of nonpartisan decision-making, but we've seen influence from the outside group, ARCAN, which stands for Regina Civic Action Awareness Network. And according to their website, one of the issues that they're concerned about is the Regina Public School Board's social justice mission. They say since 2020, there's been a lot of committee work within the Regina Public School Board aimed at promoting diversity, equity, inclusion, gender equity, racial equity, and other goals related to social justice. So I'm going to ask both of you, and we're also-- we have another candidate on the line, Cale McClellan. Cale, hello?
Hi.
Okay, so, Cale, did you just hear the last question?
Um--
So what are your thoughts on the group ARCAN? And have you seen them being actively involved in this campaign?
Uh, yeah. My thoughts are, I can't-- I don't want to discount their beliefs and their-- actually, do you want to discount their beliefs because their beliefs aren't great? They're harmful to the most marginalized among us. And I've seen a bit of folks who are engaged in ARCAN and are also engaged in the campaign. Everyone that I've had an encounter with has been polite. I'm thankfully pretty lucky that I haven't had to deal with some of the other trustees I had to deal with. And I think that, like, to break down these walls between, I guess, what mainstream people-- mainstream beliefs, I guess, like the progress we made in society and folks who are engaged in ARCAN, like, we need to foster-- make opportunities for folks to connect, understand, and to really, I think, bring them along in the fight. Because I think that, like, at their core, they care about children. Even though it's quite, in a harmful way. I think that we can't get away from-- we can't move forward without bringing these people along with us. And that's going to be a huge challenge, but I think that it's a challenge that's worthwhile.
And, Cale, you didn't get an opportunity before when the other candidates just let us know a little bit about themselves. But maybe just for our listeners, if you could describe or explain what made you decide to run for school board in the first place?
Certainly. So I ran for school board because I have a child in this public school system, and I'm seeing the ways that his school journey has differed greatly from my school journey in my years in the public school system in Regina. I've also seen--
Hey, Cale, when you say that, when you say that his school journey has differed from yours, can you give an example?
Certainly. I think that it's just like things, like, there's just not enough support for the students. He's somebody who struggles a bit with anxiety and social anxiety. And so-- and I did as well as a child. But I felt like I felt very supportive and like my teacher was able to make accommodations as necessary and as was our EA. And like, my school was genuinely very supportive and like, being able to make it so that I was able to come to class every day in a good, positive way. But I've seen, like, we've been through a few schools, and it's just, there's too many kids, there's too many diverse needs within these classrooms. And it's just, it's difficult to see these kids really paying the price of the chronic underfunding we're seeing and the lack of support for both teachers and students.
Thanks, Cale. Tracy, you've been listening. What are your thoughts?
So just regarding ARCAN--
Yeah.
My experience with ARCAN and the folks, the anti-LGBTQ candidates and the group itself, they have protested as a trustee, my experience. They've protested in our board meetings. They have--
Take people in that. I think a lot of people-- I know that a lot of school board trustees don't talk to media during the school year. So tell me a little bit about what that was like being at a school board meeting when there was protest.
Yeah, it was months of this where they would come in as a spectator, as an audience of the school board, of the board meeting, and they would try to intimidate us. They would stand there with t-shirts with certain messaging on the t-shirts. After the meetings, they would approach our director of education and the deputy directors, and really, they were trying to get to the trustees. And they would threaten and yell out some obscene things. They also-- of course, they were stopped by staff and security. We had to implement, install, get security to be at the board meetings. They would also wait for us outside our office, outside our building, actually, at the cars that they thought were our cars, and they would wait for us. And, you know, it was something that we wish didn't happen because it just doesn't send a good message.
But it didn't scare you away?
No. We do this for the kids and the teachers and the staff. We work hard to make sure that, you know, our reaction is just always to ensure safety for everyone.
Did you hear from any of the trustees that you served with that they weren't up for putting their name in again because of this?
Nope.
Everybody's been emboldened?
Yeah, everyone stayed strong.
Okay, interesting. And Jason, you've been listening along. What are your thoughts?
Well, when we look at certain candidates and certain backings and kind of their stances, for me personally, it was more so knocking door-to-door campaigning and talking to individuals that support their organization. I quite enjoy those conversations. Me as an educator, I love having discussions with people that I might disagree with and have difference of opinion on. And I think we've got to look at where is this push coming from? And I think it's a lack of understanding of what's actually happening in schools. When you look at the social media and what we see online, we just assume it's happening in our schools in Regina. So I think that's where the disconnect is.
Jason, can you give an example of the things that you think people are seeing online that may be out of touch or out of step with what you're seeing in the classrooms?
So a common discussion I have with people at the doorstep is what's being taught at young grades. So when you look at diversity and LGBTQ, people think that in Grade 1, Grade 2, it's being pushed quite well to students to how that lifestyle is, whereas it's a simple conversation. When you look at maybe a Grade 1 class, the teacher might discuss family dynamics where some families have a mom and a dad, some families might have one mom, some families might have two dads. And that's kind of the extent of what's being taught, whereas people don't think that's where it stops, it's going way deeper into the sexuality piece, which educators have a good understanding of age appropriateness and responsibility to teach what the Saskatchewan curriculum is. So that's where that disconnect is. Does that make sense?
It does. Cale, you're still there? Okay, Cale. And just as we're talking about, you know, like, third parties also, you've been endorsed by the Regina and District Labor Council. So, I mean, some people would say that that's a third party that's, you know, is there money that comes with endorsement from the Labor Council?
Yep, there is. It's not a ton of money. It's just enough to get started campaigning, so like enough to print all leaflets and then to maybe get some headshots. And it's an endorsement that I'm actually really proud of. I'm proud that I'm backed by the unions. I've always been a very principled, like, pro-worker person in my politics. And I'm-- my dad was a union man, so I'm, yeah, I'm proud of that endorsement.
Yeah, so I'm curious, like, what are the values of the labor union that aligns with you and your values?
Sure. So when I applied to be endorsed by the labor union, I had to fill out a questionnaire, and they asked-- they did something like vetting and asking like how I felt on diversity, equity, inclusion, sustainability, and like economic justice, or not, environmental justice, and other like social justice-oriented stuff, which is really, does align with the history of unions historically. And I guess they thought that my answers were good enough to be endorsed. And yeah, I'm proud of that. I think that being socially justice-minded is a good thing.
I'm sitting here with two other candidates in subdivision two in Regina Public School, Jason Agar and Tracy McMurci. Is there anything else that either of you had wanted to talk about when it comes to the role of third-party groups in school board elections?
Yeah, I would add that, you know, I think we really need to take seriously what the agenda that ARCAN has been putting out there. They are saying that teachers are indoctrinating our kids. They're saying that, you know, they're teaching kids to be gay, and that is so not what is happening in the classrooms. There's such misrepresentation, as Jason had said, misinformation, misrepresentation of what's happening in the classrooms. Teachers are teaching tolerance and making kids feel safe and supported. And I think that's really important for people to know that, you know, the seriousness of these third-party groups such as ARCAN. With ARCAN, they're well-funded, and they are, you know, they use code words like "education, not activism" and "back to basics." So things like messages like that, really, people have to really understand, read between the lines, really understand, do their research on how this can hurt kids, vulnerable kids who are suffering, struggling with gender identity in schools. So we need to keep our kids safe.
So we're having a conversation today, dropping into one public school riding in Regina. It's election day tomorrow. People will be heading to the polls. We could not talk to all of the candidates across the province, so we decided to zoom in on one. I'm joined right now in studio by Tracy McMurci and Jason Agar, and on the line with Cale McClellan, three of the four candidates who are running in subdivision two. If you want to join the conversation, you can call 1-800-716-2221, or you can email I got an email from Jan in Saskatoon who says, "I live in Saskatoon and don't have children, so really, school board elections don't impact me specifically. Some residents in Saskatoon got a spreadsheet saying, 'Say no to sexual orientation and gender identities in schools in our ward.'" But I guess it was distributed in other wards. They listed the books, the authors, and a list of schools where these books are housed. And they listed all three candidates running for the public school board in our ward. I reached out to one of these people running in our ward and said, "If this is the type of thing that stands, none of them would get my vote." So here we go, down the rabbit hole, like in the USA, banning books, just totally unacceptable. So much hate and misinformation. I trust the voters in both cities will ignore this crap and put qualified people in place. So I'm curious if that's-- are you hearing anything like that in people wanting to ban particular books? Are you hearing that when you're out campaigning? Cale, maybe we'll go to you.
I haven't heard any outright calls for banning books. I haven't heard-- yeah, I haven't heard a ton of very blatant anti-LGBTQ, I+ stuff like that. I think that, like, most parents don't actually know what books their kids are reading anyways. Like, if we're going to talk about, if we want to control that much of the curriculum, I think that you should have become a teacher yourself or worked in the Ministry of Education. I think that, yeah, I don't-- that's not a huge thing that I've seen, not a huge desire that I've heard either.
Jason, you're a teacher in the classroom. What about you? Have you heard from parents who don't want you teaching certain books?
So I've actually had some phone calls from voters in my area, and this has been a discussion, actually. And I'd just like to say, as an educator, the reason I'm running is more so for funding for education and supports in the classroom. This topic of parent rights versus student rights, LGBTQ, teaching sexual identity, it is one of the biggest conversations that I have going door-to-door, which is, it's an important topic, but I find it frustrating because I feel like when you look at Saskatchewan funding and supports in schools, that is a bigger issue, especially with our increase in student populations. But when it comes to the topic of banning books, it comes to an education piece. So with this specific individual, I ask specific questions to what exactly are the books that should be banned and what, how are they impactful on students? And that's where it kind of gets to a broad discussion instead of specifics. So this just goes to everybody. If you want things to change, you kind of focus on actual specifics. Name a specific book, how it's dangerous for kids. But again, I believe that we should have books for kids to learn and trust the teachers and the education system to provide proper books for kids, so.
And you're right, we are going down a bit of a rabbit hole here. But it leads to our next piece of tape, which I think I want you both, maybe Tracy and Cale, to be thinking about the other issues that you're hearing on the doorstep. But back to Jamie Smith-Windsor, who's the current president of the Saskatchewan School Board Association. I just want to play you a little bit of her.
It was an interesting, this year, to see the overlap of provincial elections with school board elections and the way that education has surfaced as, you know, as a priority. It's given, I think, an opportunity for, through our school board elections, to take a look at what are the priorities for school boards during this time. And the things that are surfacing are very common for school boards around the province. School boards want to see increased investment in education. We want to see, you know, the education funding gap that has manifested over the last 10-plus years be addressed. So that's making sure that funding keeps up with inflation and enrollment growth, investment in things like inclusion and innovation, universal full-time kindergarten and school food programs. Those things keep surfacing over and over again. And so sometimes when there's that overlap between a provincial election and local elections, there is an opportunity to amplify and elevate those conversations. And I think the public is paying attention. I'm certainly hearing that as I'm out talking to my neighbors at this time of year.
And so, Tracy, I'll come to you. Just what are you hearing from people about the issues in education that they care most about?
Yeah, absolutely. I hear all kinds of issues, just people get very specific as well. But really, the common trends, the common ones are classroom complexities and supporting teachers in the classrooms, what teachers need to teach the kids, and the adequate funding. Those are the big ones.
Cale, what have you been hearing on the doorsteps?
Yeah, I'd say a lot of the same. I've been hearing classroom sizes is a huge one, and then in certain neighborhoods, I should say. When I've been canvassing, I'm in the Heritage neighborhood, it's a lot of food insecurity and kids worrying about other kids actually having enough food to eat. So that's why I'm super proud of, like, our free breakfast program at Thompson School that I helped found. It's-- there's so many issues that are in society that we're seeing, like, wives for poverty, food insecurity, housing insecurity. All that is ultimately magnified in the classroom. And like, it shows up in various ways, right? It can look like behavior issues, or it can look like a student who's, yeah, being defiant. And unfortunately, like, if we aren't doing our job to ensure that those basic needs are met of our students, we're just going to keep seeing this issue of complexity, or not complexity, but, you know, issues in our classrooms with behavior and that kind of stuff, right? And that's, I mean, we've got a long, we've got a big fight ahead of us, and I think that it's really important to not just look at school board trustees and schools in particular as separate from the community. These are community spaces, and these are spaces where students and kids come to receive care from the community, right? Like, if we don't address and don't fight for these outside forces that are causing havoc in our communities, we're just going to keep having the same discussion over and over again.
Jason, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, like, when you, when Cale talks about the challenges in schools, me as an educator, those are challenges that we see. And again, that's the reason why I'm running, is to try and help make change. It's really unfortunate that the lack of funding is affecting students. And when you look at school divisions and trustees, they're trying to do the best they can with the funds that they receive. They're put with their backs up against the wall to have less funding and increase in students and increase inflation costs. It's very difficult to do that. And me, I want to fight and advocate for education in schools so that we get better funding, so we can get the supports that Cale is talking about. For her to say that the challenges that her child is facing today and that she had those supports as she was a kid, it was a different time back then with education. And education's changing, kids are changing, society's changing, and we need to provide adequate funding to help that change.
I'm just so curious about what your understanding is of what a trustee does. And I'm sure that you have to explain this over and over-- And I'm sure that you have to explain this over and over and over on the doorstep when people, when you say that you're running to be a school board trustee. What does that mean? Where do you have influence? Where you not have influence? Um, I'm curious about the elevator pitch that you've been telling people on the doorstep for what is a trustee. Um, Tracy, you, you have the most experience as a trustee, so maybe I'll start with you.
Sure, yeah. I, um, I do get asked that a lot, because, and I think it's a really important question, uh, because not many people, not everyone knows. Um, it is obviously an elected position, um, so it's governance and representation, so...
And you're paid?
Yes, it's, there's a bit of compensation there, but that is not why we do it, absolutely. Um, it's a lot of work. It's, um, and it's serious work. And, um, we, we listen to the community, right? We listen to the, just the different interests, um, of the community, uh, that we represent. We, uh, there's policy development, of course, involved, um, in the, in the role. And, um, we approve, we'll review and approve budgets. And so that's where my CPA comes in handy. It's a chartered professional, chartered professional accountant designation, and it's, you know, I find the financial stuff fun, so, um, might be one of few. But, um, I think it's, a lot of the role is community engagement as well, and just working, um, with the schools, with the school community, with the schools and the, the teachers and, and students and, and families and teacher and, uh, administration. And a lot of it is advocacy as well, as, as you, as everyone probably knows. Um, advocacy, advocating for more funding, for more support, and ensuring that, you know, just the oversight of operations and ensuring transparency and accountability.
Advocating to who?
Uh, the, the Ministry of Education, the government, right? Um, just for more funding for education. Um, and working with, um, the community in partnership with organizations, maybe in the, in the community. Um, what is important though is, um, what we don't do is, uh, the, the board and the trustees do not set the curriculum, that, uh, the Ministry of Education sets the curriculum. And so that's, that's one thing I think some people don't know.
Cale, uh, what's your understanding of what a trustee does? Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Um, I don't think so. I think Tracy pretty much covered it. I think that, um, we're seeing now a lot more trustees willing to engage in advocacy, and I think that that's just a sign of the times. Um, the situation's gotten so dire that these people who, uh, these positions at least that were seen as apolitical before, um, have had to really, um, put their bodies on the line and have to stand up now to a government that is chronically underfunding one of our most, um, important, uh, public institutions.
Do you have an example of, of how you've seen that shift?
Yeah, well, I'm lucky enough to call Ted Juleta a good friend of mine. And so I've seen him go publicly, um, advocate for a lot of the stuff, um, like specifically against Bill, um, 137, uh, the pronoun policy. And, um, I'm very proud of him for that, but I'm also like, a bit sad that we haven't seen that sort of, I guess, widespread support. Um, not many, I don't think any of the other trustees actually spoke out against it. And, um, yeah, that's my, my, I guess, example.
So there is a, a trustee, it's my understanding, there is a trustee code of conduct, is there? And Tracy, do you have any, any thoughts on, I guess, maybe trustees in kind of taking more activist roles, or, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely. There is a code of conduct. We, we just want to ensure that, you know, there's no breach of confidentiality in anything that we discuss in our positions, that we, you know, we just, we discuss it in camera, um, in our, in camera sessions. But more importantly, I think, um, people should know that we, we have these conversations behind the scenes. We make sure that we, um, uh, our, our voices are heard, that we communicate our stance. But a lot of it is, you know, not yelling, right? It's, it's not all about yelling and, and, um, and screaming about our positions. It's, a lot of it is open communication, uh, discussion and being, you know, professional, having those professional discussions behind the scenes on our positions, I think is important. When everyone's yelling, it's just noise, right?
Jason, I mean, teachers are in a bit tricky situations also in terms of waning politically, or they had been in the past, maybe it's shifted now. Uh, what are your thoughts on, on that? Is there room for kind of a more of an activist role, um, when you're on school board?
Uh, so, it's interesting, because if I was to be elected, it's, it's a balance of, I'm an educator, but I'm also a trustee, right? And I think it's really important to understand the difference between educator and trustee, but also understand the perspective of a classroom teacher when making decisions at the school board level. Um, it's, how do I put it? It's a difficult balance, and I think as a trustee, understanding policy and understanding what you can and can't do and what, how you can advocate is really important. Um, and sometimes as a trustee, uh, I think it's important to understand that, the understanding of when you need to see change, you do need to make those voices heard, uh, and make sure the people that need to hear it, hear it. So those things are important as well. Um, another thing I'd like to add, when you look at the position of a trustee, uh, Tracy did a really good job explaining it, uh, it's also to guide, um, the values and the mission statement of a school division as well, which is really important. Um, and also to have a good, strong working relationship with the director of education. Um, it's described as the director as the parent and the trustees as the grandparent to make sure that the school function, um, is going well and operations. So really important position, I think, I feel.
Well, we have another question from a student, um, from Muscha. Standing by, so here we go.
My name is Devon Grejek. I'm a grade 11 student at Pecot Collegiate in Muscha. What experience or investment in education do you bring to the table as a potential board member?
So I just wanted to, to really drill that down, but maybe just, I know there's lots, you have a whole lifetime of experience, but maybe just give me one life experience, a perspective that you think that you bring to the table. I mean, ultimately, we're gonna have a, a big table with a lot of different voices and a lot of different perspectives, hopefully, I think is the goal. Um, what is the, the one perspective that you think that you add that maybe is lacking at the table right now? Um, Cale, I can't see you, so you look ready to go.
I'm so ready for this. Um, I think one aspect, or one perspective that I bring to the table is that I'm, um, I'm an indigenous mom. I'm a, I was a teen mom. I went through the public school system. I like, I've done every, even Catholic school, I've done, uh, qualified independent school, I've done public schools. And I've, um, throughout those schools, I've never been able to shed my identity as an indigenous woman, because that's who I am, uh, to my core, that's who I always will be, that's who I'm proud to be. Um, we've never had an indigenous trustee on Regina Public School Board. Um, it's, we're 16 years past the formal apology, um, eight years past the final report of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Lots of those calls to action were, um, aimed at education. And I know that we did have, um, Ted brought forward a motion, Ted Juleta, um, to have a designated seat for indigenous, an indigenous trustee, which would be, would have been great. Um, but, yeah, I, I bring that voice and I bring that experience and I bring, um, a lot of the, the community teachings and the guiding that I've, I've received from the elders in my community, uh, to the table, and I think that's been missing for far too long.
Are there any topics or any things that have come up at city council that you think would have benefited? I mean, besides everything, but are there any issues in particular that you feel like would have benefited having an indigenous person at that table?
Sure. I'm assuming you mean, uh, school board trustee, not city council?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that we've seen a lot of, like, the, like, pretty, um, we're, we're picking medicine and we're wearing urban skirts and we're wearing urban shirts and, um, that's all, it's nice to have, I guess, that kind of, um, visual representation, but there's no, there's been no meaningful, um, I'd say, meaningful engagement with, um, like, knowledge keepers. Uh, we've, I know there's definitely, um, elders in the schools now, and that's a huge thing, and that's, that's a huge step for progress. But, um, when we're talking about things like absences, um, do have families, or have teachers, have they considered, like, indigenous families? Uh, when we grieve, we spend, we've got ceremony that lasts four days. Um, and so like, that's a lot of schoolwork for a kid to miss, but it's also, um, important not to, it's important for our cultural identity. Um, there's also things like when families go out, go hunting or go collect medicine, um, those will be like, those will look like unexplained absences or like maybe unnecessary absences, but that's, um, that's like really, that's crucial to, to any of so many indigenous people, that like, we can't ignore that, and...
Unofficial, maybe unofficial land-based education.
Exactly. And it's not a beautiful thing that we've, um, some people got less than, have spent, um, four years going to school to receive an education degree, but we've also got these beautiful examples of outdoor learning, um, from people who, I mean, their first language is Indian English. Um, and I think that that's, that's important, and that's, I think that, um, having indigenous lands of caring for the land and living in reciprocity with the land, um, is really gonna teach all students to be good stewards of the land, and that leads, I think, to just good things.
Okay, thank you for that, Cale. Um, Jason, what about you?
Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, as Cale was speaking there about land-based education, I think it's really important that we incorporate that, us as a society. It's as if we're getting more disconnect from the land and environment, so I think having that more incorporated is great for kids. Um, what I bring to the table as a trustee, um, the biggest thing is I'm a, I'm an educator. I'm in the classrooms, um, I'm a current teacher, and I plan to be a teacher for the next 20 years. So I provide that perspective. When you look at trustees, um, a lot of the times, they have different professions outside of education, which is good, when you look at the role of trustee. But I feel like we're missing that educated perspective. Um, and not only that, um, I'm part of my teacher association, so I'm constantly in contact with teachers throughout the city, so I'm seeing different perspectives, because challenges in one school, uh, are totally different than challenges in another school. So I bring that perspective, um, to affect and change policy that is better for the kids. So that's what I bring.
And Tracy, what about you?
I, I spoke a bit about my personal, um, journey here, but, you know, I want to focus right now on, um, the fact that, you know, my specialty is, you know, connecting with people and building relationships, and that's what I do best. I've connected with, um, all my schools, I, I engage, I work really closely with them. And in addition to that, building on that, it takes, you know, professionalism. And what I bring is, um, I, I have a financial acumen. I think there's just the, the, my resume and my track record really, to me, I, I think are very important and meaningful. I'm able to, um, you know, develop the budgets, I'm able to understand the, the issues that, and policy development and the issues that come up. Um, I have leadership experience. I, I have heart, and I think that's really important in a trustee as well, um, besides, you know, the, the journey and understanding technical issues. Uh, to be able to, to have heart, to have heart and be able to connect with the people in the community, I think is, is what, what I bring. And, um, I, I think, you know, I'm very grateful for the support that I, that I've received from the community so far and from all my schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have another question from another grade 11 student, Nora.
Will there be more of a budget allocated to fund SSTs and EAs? If not, how do you plan to support students who need that additional help but can't get it?
Okay, first off, what's an SST? Jason, I'm looking at you.
Uh, so my guess is when she says SST, uh, student support teacher, is that what we're talking about?
I would assume it's something...
EAs, usually.
Yeah, something in that line, because EA is just the only one that I'm, no, but I want to make sure that everybody's understanding that in the same way. So support, support, additional support in the classroom for teachers. Um, yeah, her question was, how do you plan to support students who need that additional help but can't get it? It's a tricky question, I don't know. Uh, Jason has his hand up, go ahead, Jason.
Uh, so, uh, that's a big one. Um, when you look at it, a big thing with that is, it goes to the individual schools. Um, some schools do an amazing job of, um, moving teachers around in EA support and providing support where it's needed. Again, with more funding, it's easier for schools to do that. But schools need to be a little bit creative in how they can move, um, their personnel around and changing their classroom environments to help support those students. So there's not a real good, easy answer to that, um, but it's more so, um, a personnel focus from a school. As a school division, um, giving schools that freedom to do that while also pushing the responsibility to make sure it happens, I think will help it, um, be achieved better, if that makes sense?
Mm-hmm. Cale, what about you?
I might like to change policies and more, because more streamlined, while advocacy isn't necessary any longer. Um, I think like, we should, it should be, accommodations should be the norm, right? We still have to, um, make accommodations for, um, kids however they show up. I'm somebody who benefited greatly from accommodations in, uh, university. Um, and I think that, yeah, having a sports staff is so important, and it's gonna be, um, us being loud and maybe yelling, uh, to get the attention that's needed for these students to receive the support, support they need. Shame is a powerful tool, and, uh, I've got no problem shaming folks who are writing the checks to schools, um, so that we get the support that they all need.
Tracy, thoughts?
Yeah, I think listening to, um, the teachers and the educators in this, in the schools and empowering them to, you know, again, listening to their ideas and their thoughts and how they think things can, um, you know, be, like Jason said, be creative a little bit, give them that creative, um, power, but really empower them to, um, implement different things in, in their schools that, within their, you know, authority. And, um, listening to the, the students and what they need. And of course, like, you know, the families know best as well, um, what their, their child needs in, in, in schools as well. Um, but again, you know, giving the teachers the tools as much as, as we can with the budget, within the budget we have. I would add, though, that we do look at, as trustees, as a board, we do look at, you know, the specialized staff and specialized programs and programming that we can, um, we can implement or put in place when, when there is, you know, um, funding that we can allocate toward it. We, those are the things we look, we do look seriously at.
You know, we only have a few minutes left. I'm gonna try to squeeze in an email here from Kathy, who writes, "I believe the most important considerations in this election for the school board trustees is that the public school system has been chronically underfunded by the province. The problems this has caused in the schools, class sizes that are far too large, and a lack of resources to tackle class complexities are what needs to be addressed and fixed. Public schools need funding, not wedge issues that paint teachers and board members as threats to the well-being of our children. Teachers are not grooming children, their public school board trustees aren't part of a great plot to indoctrinate children. These are the same tactics that have been used down in the USA to discredit public schools. I think it's important that all candidates for the public school board speak up against this." And that email came from Kathy. I know that, um, we, we need five more hours for this conversation. Uh, I know that, that the question, the kids in, in Muscha were concerned about trans rights, they were concerned about overcrowded classrooms. So, um, I just want to thank all of you for being part of the show today, Jason Agar, Tracy McMerchie, Cale McClellan, and the fourth candidate, who declined our invitation, was Carla Taylor-Brown. So tomorrow on Blue Sky, we'll have a special municipal election day show. We'll be looking at why Alberta think tanks have such an interest in Saskatchewan municipal politics, and we'll dig into whether Saskatchewan should follow Alberta's lead and allow parties in the municipal level. So join that conversation tomorrow between 12 and 1:00. Remember to get out there and vote. And if you have thoughts on this conversation, you can email bluesky@cbc.ca. Thanks so much and have a great afternoon.